A bummer.
You read about something like that a lot, though, with elderly people that one spouse.
Stand by. Five, four, three.
One.
Good evening and welcome to Kettering City of Kettering Workshop. Today's date is January the 12th. And we will turn this over at this point to Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We'll start tonight with the agenda review and then we, as you can see, we have a number of guests appearing on your screen tonight. So we'll have a couple of presentations. And then we'll, after the presentations, I got a few more updates and then we will have an executive session this evening. First thing I'd start with is the event agenda review and Your Honor, you hopefully received my email that indicates who's taking which resolution item tonight on the agenda.
Uh, no, but I'll look and see.
All right. Well, it is fairly easy. I'll just read it out to you. Tom Robillard will be number one. Ron Hunt is number two, and those are the two public hearings. I'll take number three. Then I will turn it over to Steve for the engineering show from items four through nine. And then I'll take number 10.
And Mark, there's, there's apparently two residents that want to speak during the second public hearing. So we'll see if they call in or not, but Shauna was notified that two people want to speak about that one.
Second one being the one on Smithville?
That's correct.
Yeah.
We did have one question in regards to the agenda tonight and our concrete repair program and how some of those funds are allocated. So I'll turn that over to Steve. And he will answer that question.
All right. Thanks, Mark. The question was raised about the concrete repair program and overlaying bare concrete streets with asphalt. We have that situation on a number of our residential streets. And it really, what we deal with now is the reflective cracking problem. So when we get a crack where the joints are underneath the concrete, that reflects directly up into the asphalt surface. So we get less of a life out of the surface of the street when we have that situation. So our preference right now is if we have a bare residential street that is concrete, that we just make the repairs and not overlay them to avoid that reflective cracking issue. Could we, could we overlay them? Yes, we certainly could. But in order to do that, we need to make the concrete repairs first underneath. Otherwise, it's just creating a bad base. So that's why we do that. And frankly, the additional gas tax money that we see now coming through, we are prior, reprioritizing some of these bare concrete streets, particularly this year, Windermere, Hillerman, James Hill, and also on Foxdale. So once we're, after 2021, Hillerman and James Hill will be fully repaired. We won't need to come back there for a very, very long time. Windermere will be about half to 40% complete. And then we'll pick that up again in 2022. And then Foxdale will make a concerted effort again in 2022 to do more repairs on that as well. May not be able to finish it off, Foxdale off in 22, but we'll certainly give it a try to do that. Just look at some numbers here that our engineering department put together. Will probably be about 40% complete on necessary repairs on Foxdale by the end of this year, and then we'll look to complete the rest of it next year. So, but Mr. Kleepas, I know you answered, asked that question. Hopefully that, that answers your question.
I was more trying to have a, I guess, non-engineering answer for a couple of residents that ask, why do we continue to patch that area with either contract concrete or sometimes asphalt? When the rest of Foxdale and the majority of Foxdale is asphalt already, and I know probably because those houses were built a little later than the ones with concrete, but I was at, where, where, where do we get into a economic standpoint and say, this isn't cost effective anymore? To continue to put concrete in or, and you know, and I know we've been doing asphalt patching on some of that concrete that has deteriorated. I believe that I've even been told that there was a bad concrete used over there too at one during construction time. So I don't know what that means either, but so that would, that would be more like, you know, what's, what's, what's a simple answer to say, well, after we do it in 40% this year and 60% next year, they won't be back for a long time? That's, I mean, is that?
Yeah, yeah. The, the concrete repairs are more expensive upfront, but you get a longer life out of them. And the reason why the rest of Foxdale is asphalt is because it has a full depth asphalt base. It doesn't have a concrete base south of wherever the condos end there.
Okay, thanks.
As Steve mentioned, we have two public hearings tonight and a possibility for a couple of folks that are going to call in on the Smithville one. Are there any other questions on agenda items for this evening? All right, I'll head into just a few brief miscellaneous items and then we'll turn it over to Mary Beth for a presentation regarding Rosewood. On the January 26th council agenda, it's our intention to appoint a citizen to the RTA board. And I believe all of you have had a conversation with the mayor, but Al Fulenkamp has agreed to serve in that capacity after, after being asked. And I have contacted Mark Donahue at the Greater Dayton RTA and he is aware of our timing and fine with the timing that the appointment would take place on the 26th. And of course, Mark knows Al, so that works as well. Any, any concerns with that moving forward on the 26th?
Is there a term on that, Mark?
There are terms, but they can serve multiple terms. So for instance, Franz Hoagie served four terms, I believe, on the RTA board.
But is it term of year?
Uh, no, I think it's multiple years, Tony. I'm, I'm not absolutely certain, but I'm certain that a staff member on this call will be Googling that right now to find out for me. But it is multiple year terms.
It might be four or six. I'm not sure which one.
It's not six, I can tell you that.
Probably four, yeah. One, one, one.
We'll have that for you by the end of the meeting. How's that?
Okay.
We've mentioned in previous council meetings and authorizations, the sale of land at Miami Valley Research Park to Life Connection of Ohio. That closing took place today, should be finalized hopefully tomorrow morning. So that's good. That'll allow Life Connection to get started with their new facility there. So thanks for your cooperation in that matter. Obviously it involved an economic project with the creation of donor, donor court to go along and facilitate that. The net proceeds for the city should be in the neighborhood of $657,000. So a good transaction for everybody at this point. The police department is experiencing or has experienced moving day today. Phase one of the, the lower level plaza area for the police department has been completed. And we are began today moving police operations back into phase one. As you know, the upper level administrative staff moved in a couple of months ago. And shortly we'll be beginning what I believe is the last phase at the other end of the lower level. So slowly but surely, we're getting that underway. And then just another fire captain promotion, I want to make sure you saw, I don't remember if we sent out an also the email on that, but as the, the pro promotion process trickles down from the promotion of Assistant Chief Robbins to Chief Robbins, we have now appointed a new captain. The new captain is Chris Denlinger and Chris will be our flex captain in the staffing model. So, and I believe that was effective on Monday. So with that, Steve, if you could put up the Rosewood slides and we will turn it over to Mary Beth.
Good. Looks like three year term. It's a three year term for the RTA board. If the county's information is correct.
Thanks, Steve.
FYI, we can put that issue to bed.
There are some benefits not to being in the council chamber.
Well, thank you, Steve. He's going to be driving the PowerPoint today. And I'm going to present tonight the modification in the Art Center. What is in a name? Nick, so there's been a lot of discussion over the last couple of years about the Art Center and what the future is of it is, but tonight it's mostly based on fundraising. I'm going to put that out front first. And, but I'm going to talk a little bit about the Art Center name in terms of the background. You can see by the slide that talking to Jerry Bush, our former mayor, and also Roger Bowser, and I wasn't able to put that on the slide tonight. Rosewood's name was from the housing plat that the elementary school was built within. So it was never, like a lot of our parks and our, our, our school buildings, they were kind of named after where they were located. Looking back through the archives, the lease agreement in 83, when we entered into the, entered into the agreement with the schools, the premises on the agreement were known as Rosewood Elementary School. That was it. That was all the information that was provided. And then within that document, all that was described was that the city was to use it for public purposes and programming. No other information was described. And I have no rec, I have no documents to why we retain Rosewood's name for the Art Center, but we did. So in 2020, when the law department entered into this swap agreement with the schools, there were no name restrictions requested in the agreement. So contacting multiple, multiple Kettering City School sources, there was no knowledge about where the Rosewood name originated from, only that it was named from the plat originated from the original building of the, of the elementary school. Next slide. Okay, so there. The direction tonight is to request from council a name modification to the building. And there's not many reasons why we would do that, but number one is that based on the new acquisition of the building to the city, we would like to create a new identity for the facility, not necessarily abandoning totally the Rosewood reality, but we wanted to create a new identity for the facility. The second thing is that we wanted to create a fresh approach to marketing. Kind of get away from what people thought of in terms of the Art Center to actually a more vibrant Art Center. And I know that we'll talk about this and we have talked about this is what the renovation will look like, but it just is more of a marketing switch. The next thing is that it does provide us an opportunity for building naming rights. So dropping Rosewood is kind of a naming right. So back in 1983, when we retained Rosewood, maybe that was a naming right, but in our marketing world today, naming rights change. So if we actually, I'm not saying totally abandoning it because maybe we want to retain it in some kind of archive situation. But we want to provide an opportunity for a fresh, you know, somebody wants to say, hey, blah, 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 like Sweeterman Art Center. That would be sweet, Mark. If you ever wanted to do that, good. But it gives us an opportunity to leverage that. The other thing is that the Park Foundation is embarking on a three-year reinvention campaign to raise funds to pay for the FNE for the building. So this does allow us for that opportunity, not necessarily abandoning our history. And I know Kettering, great thing about Kettering is that we have history. But more importantly, it does provide us with that reinvention piece to open it up for a new type of look for the building. So again, this request is more not necessarily historically abandoning a name, but more importantly, giving us a new direction for the facility. And more importantly, Steve, next slide. The Arts in Kettering, it's who we are. And you really think about what we are as an organization. Kettering is quite frankly, a leader in the region in terms of the arts. So this little switch is, and maybe it is a bigger switch for some, but the switch does definitely provide us with that amazing opportunity to take arts in our community to a next level.
So that's a very quick update on kind of the proposal of what we're looking for and comments, questions, feedback as we move forward with the Parks Foundation in regards to fundraising for the Art Center.
I think it makes sense as a former Kettering educator. I think it's great that we're using it in a meaningful way. If you change the name, no big deal. Go for it.
So for fundraising, I assume the capital campaign would be Mary Lou various levels, various rooms, various opportunities for people?
Yeah, Bruce, absolutely. We're, there's a oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, no, actually in March, we were ready to go in March for everything, but COVID, of course, shut us down. But we do, we're still kind of putting our plan together for what we want to do. And Bruce, yes, it does give us different opportunities, but it's kind of a refresher. Just gives us a different mindset. Going from one situation to another situation or one building look to a new building look. And I think, well, of course I'm going to be biased. I think it's a good, it's a good move.
I agree.
Hey, Mary Beth, it's Tony. What, what do you think the amount of dollars that would take to get someone's name on that building?
Well, I might have to defer to the manager on that answer. Mark and I had a couple of email exchange today. So Mark, I'll, I'll defer to you, sir.
Well, all I can tell you, Councilman Kleepas is, is the dollar amount that I offered did not get my name on the building.
It's kind of my point. Do you put it out for bids?
Mary, Mary Beth and I talked about this a little bit today and what I wanted today to be about is whether or not you're comfortable with the fact that we would put this out there as an offering to people, hey, you can, you can have naming rights. If you're comfortable with that, the Parks Foundation is going to work with Mary Beth. They've already got a kind of a template of a sponsorship program and levels, as Bruce had mentioned. And we will get you all of that information as they finalize it and as it becomes time to go out there and set the market, if you will, and start asking. But we'll get to that information right before we do that or before we do that. Frankly, I don't know what that dollar amount is. And I know from previous experiences in dealing with this type of thing, it usually evolves out of the conversation with the donor. It's not necessarily a set amount at the beginning. It's a significant amount, but it's not necessarily a set dollar amount.
Is there history of us to, because I know the Charles Lathrop Center, that was probably before, that was definitely before my time. Is there a history of this?
We do have some buildings and, and operations that are named after folks, not so much from a sponsorship level, though more from a, an honoring level. I think the, the history we have that's the most prevalent would be the phrase Pavilion. That is a result of a significant dollar contribution at that time.
Thanks.
Is everybody comfortable with us moving forward under this concept? I see a lot of thumbs up. We will take that as a yes. I see two thumbs up. We'll take that as a heck yes. And then we will move on to our next presentation. Maggie and Andy and, and the group would like to give you a little update on what we're calling Project Mobility, which refers back to a time back in early 2020 when city council took action to impose a moratorium on the scooters and bicycles that you remember back from those discussions. And they have an update presentation for you this evening. So I'll turn it over.
Before we go on, I just, can we set some timeframes as far as for this? Cause we were on a Zoom call, Mary Beth and I with another individual today as far as talking about putting together a package for sponsorships and in particular, naming rights. I, I think, you know, because we tend to not define a timeframe of which we're going to do this. I had already, and I think most of you knew, had met with a gentleman as far as talking about that two years ago and we just, the process just took a while with Martin and doing things, et cetera. And while I wouldn't say that he's lost interest, I don't want to get going down a road. You know, that's going to run more than a block. So can, can we set a timeframe of when we look to do this? Because I think Mary Beth would agree, the person we talked to, there's a sense of anxiousness with companies because companies, because of this pandemic are having problems in doing things like this in any substantial amount. Because either their business has gone downhill or flattened or whatever it is, just something that we know that we're going to be able to do it because most people of their businesses have planned or set guidance for 2021 as far as for charitable type donations.
Yeah, I'll get with Mary Beth and of course that'll require us to get with the Parks Foundation. We'll put a timeline together of when we're ready to make the ask. So that'll give you some idea of, of when we're going to be out on the street or how quickly we can be out on the street. I'll put that in your Friday packet. And then from a, just from a global perspective, the current approach for the Parks Foundation is this, as I think Mary Beth mentioned earlier, this is a three-year campaign. So we're going to try to take into consideration the fact that we may not get a home run right away. But if we do, we'll be ready to act on it because we'll have the material. If we don't, we'll leave the campaign going for about three years as we try to raise funds. So I'll get you a rough sketch out of what that looks like. We'll put that in the Friday packet for you.
Yeah, because I think if you get somebody that's going to be doing naming rights and we were talking, you know, in a half million range or whatever, those people might like to be involved in the process of how you're going to be doing individual rooms, boardroom. I mean, I got boardrooms at the tissue center that, you know, I don't even know Marine paid for them, but you know, there are opportunities that can be there and maybe there's opportunities to work with the naming donor in things that might they might look at a little different than a governmental agency. So.
Yeah, absolutely. Maggie, am I turning it over to you?
Yes, you are. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Wonderful. Hello, everybody. Andy and I. Andy and I are happy to be here tonight so we can talk to you about shared mobility devices and share the information that we learned and our recommendations moving forward. So yeah, Steve, thank you. We have a slide deck for you as well. I just want to talk a little bit about what we did to prepare for this. So the moratorium on shared mobility devices was put in place, like Mark said, last February, it was for a year. And the purpose behind that was to take some time to really try to understand, you know, what these devices are and the companies that, that operate these shared device programs that are really, have really caught trend throughout the United States and really the world. So we took that time to learn about them and to come up with some, some options and some recommendations for all of you. So Andy and I were able to do our own research on these devices and these programs. But we also got to connect with Laura Astandia. And she's the Executive Director of Bike Miami Valley. And really one of the main managers of the partnership among the City of Dayton, RTA, MVRPC, Bike Miami Valley and the, the company that has these devices is called Link. And so you may have seen those throughout Dayton, the Bike Share. And I, I think they have scooters now too. So she was a wealth of information for us and was very helpful. I also connected with the Director of Zoning and Code Enforcement in Athens, Ohio. They also have, have allowed a company, right now they have one, they have an ordinance on it and they allow companies like this to come into their city. They're working with Lime right now. So I talked to Dave Riggs there. And he was very, very helpful. And then also Andy was able to connect with the Kettering Bike Committee to get their input as well. So I just want to start on this first slide to talk about what shared mobility devices are. It's been a long time. So just to refresh your memory, these devices, it's also known as micro mobility. And it refers to a small range of lightweight transportation devices. They operate at speeds typically at or below 15 miles per hour. And they're really ideal for short trips. So anything under like six miles. The devices include manually operated bicycles, so pedaled bicycles, but also, and scooters, but also light electric vehicles. And light electric vehicles use an electric motor. And they use an energy storage device like a battery or a fuel, fuel cell. And usually equipped with two to four wheels, weighing less than 220 pounds and getting lighter by the year, basically. So these are your e-bikes and your e-scooters. You also have e-scooters that are both pedal assisted and electric as well. And those are the more, those are on trend. Those are, you're seeing those more and more. There's also skateboards, e-skateboards. I have never seen these in operation, but my research, research says that these exist. So I don't know if any of you have seen those. But the word shared in shared mobility device refers to the notion that the devices are typically owned by a for-profit or not-for-profit company that allows its customers to use the devices for a price. And they pay over an app, which is typically on your cell phone or on your computer and they navigate the whole process that way. So I'm going to kick this over to Andy and he's going to talk to you a little bit in more detail about these particular companies and their models.
Thanks, Maggie. So Steve, oh yeah, we already went to the next slide. Good. Thank you. So we've got three different kinds of, of systems that are out there right now. And there's actually some changing going on within these systems. So the three that are typical are here on the slide. We have a station-based micro mobility system. That's what the Link bikes used to be and we'll, I'll actually show you some pictures here in a second on the next three slides. So the first one is station-based, which where you would actually go up to a station with all the bikes or devices on it. And you can see the picture on the upper left, that's station-based system. And you would go up to a kiosk and you would put in your credit card information and then you would pull a bike out of that station. When you get done with your ride, you bring it back to a station again. So again, station-based, so they have to go from one station to another station. The stations are very expensive. So that's why a lot of these systems are trying to get away from the stations. The second type of system is the lock to hub based system. And the lock to hub base is where basically you have a smart bike. And that smart bike is locked to a bike rack, but it does not have a station. So all the smarts are within the bike itself or the device itself. These, these can be again, scooters, all the things that, that Maggie mentioned. But then they have a geo fence or a virtual fence. Of course, I had to get geo someplace in this presentation. Where they, they have a map or, or an area that shows you where the bike or the device can go. If you go outside that area, if you go outside that geo fence, that geographic fence, the device will actually stop. So it tells you. Uh, so it tells you when you, when you check one of these bikes out or one of these devices out, as you're riding it, it'll actually beep at you and say you are getting at the edge of the geo fence and it will stop. The final type of system is a dockless system. These are, um, where the device can be located anywhere. So you can, you've seen, I've seen these more for the scooters than the bikes, but the bikes are becoming this way as well. Where you don't have a station, you don't have a rack that these are locked to, they're just sitting everywhere. Um, I know that I went to Washington DC a couple of years ago and there were scooters and bikes all over the sidewalks, everywhere you walked. And a lot of, uh, more, um, tourist-friendly areas, these are very popular. Uh, but maybe because they are dockless, uh, maybe become an issue. So Steve, if you could go to the next slide and we'll go through these quickly. So there is an example of a station-based model, that's the Link, uh, si- system downtown, which are, they're, they're no longer doing this anymore. Those, they're actually, they're going to be locked to hub now, so those will be gone. Um, then the next slide shows you a picture of a lock-to-hub based model. Um, and you see this bike is, I, I believe this bike is actually an electric assist bike. And again, that's the kind of system that Link is going to as well. So this is locked up with a smart bike, most likely has a geo fence for it. So you walk up there, excuse me, you unlock that bike. You check it out with your smart device and you take it and ride it within the geo fence. And then you have to take it back to one of these, these racks and lock it back up again. And then finally, the, the, the next slide shows you a dockless model. Um, so these bikes actually have locks built into them. I don't know if you could see it real well on this slide, but there's actually a lock on the back wheel of these, of these bikes. So when you walk up to this bike, you pull your phone out and you scan a, a code on the bike. Uh, you put in your credit card information, uh, it unlocks that bike for the amount of time that you've rented it for. And then you could ride within the geo fence that's permitted for that system. Next slide, please. So then why do we want these? Why, why, why are they popular? And I think that those of us have been to cities that where they are really popular. Um, you know, we see some use in downtown Dayton with our, with the Link bikes. But, you know, they, they kind of fill that last gap, that last gap. Uh, so I'm, I'm in, I'm at downtown Dayton and I just saw a baseball game and I wanted to go over to, uh, brewery. Well, I could hop on one of these scooters or one of these bikes at the, at the baseball field and ride it over to, to one of the breweries. Um, I wouldn't want to ride it after that, but that's, uh, where we would use, where this type of use would be, uh, great. Um, I know we've seen this down at Second Street Market, there's a dock there for Link. Um, so the nice part is that this would encourage physical activity, which we want more of. Reduce vehicle use, uh, less traffic noise, so someone wouldn't get in their car to make that short trip that I just mentioned. Um, they're fun, they're really fun to ride. Um, it, it allows you to see things that you don't normally see, of course, if you're in your car versus on a scooter or on a bike. Um, I already mentioned that closes the last mile gap, uh, you know, you could ride a, a bus, let's say, or a transit and then get on one of these devices and fill that last, that last, uh, step, that last step in your trip. Instead of walking, you could ride a scooter or a bike. And then, you know, it could take care of some of the parking issues that we have. So, um, if there are parking issues, let's say around Town and Country Shopping Center. Um, if you want to go from Kroger to, over to Town and Country, instead of getting in your car and trying to, to navigate, uh, over to get over to Town and Country, you could just hop on one of these scooters and get over there or one of these bikes and get over there. Uh, that's the idea. Next slide, please. There are issues, of course. Um, I know that I've seen, uh, where people don't really pay attention to traffic issues. They don't pay attention to the, the laws, the traffic laws. They ride the streets the wrong way on one-way streets. They don't wear a helmet. Uh, they leave them all over the place, as you see in some of the pictures at the bottom here. Um, I've seen scooters in places that, you know, that they're throwing people from in trash cans. I've seen them laying in bushes and things, um, they're, they're, they could be all over the place. And then, then of course we have to think about this could be a messy right-of-way, uh, where we could have these in our sidewalks. So we'd have to think about that. And then could there be any issues with businesses where I know that I've heard some cities, like we did, uh, created moratoriums? I think I, I read a story about San Francisco shutting everybody down and saying, oh, all the, the shared mobility devices have to get out of town until they figure out what they're going to do because they were just everywhere. Businesses were especially popular businesses had scooters and bikes out in front of their business, restricting access, uh, have, having people, people had difficulty riding down the, walking down sidewalks. Um, so those are some of the issues that, that could come up with these, uh, systems. Next slide, please. Are the safety issues concerns warranted? Um, eighty-four million rides were taken last year, which is double the number from twenty seventeen, so you can imagine what it is right now. Uh, I kind of wonder, it'd be interesting to see what the numbers are for twenty twenty and how that's changed with the, with, uh, COVID. Um, if the numbers have changed at all, because, you know, there are not as many people in downtown areas, which I'm guessing is where the majority of these rides have happened. Um, there were only three scooter-related deaths last year in the US. Eighty-four out of eighty-four minutes, so that was last year, so there's got to be more, I mean, maybe not this year. Uh, maybe in, in twenty nineteen, uh, but that's still a really low number. There were only two bike share related deaths in the last decade. That's really low again. Um, there were one hundred and thirty-three thousand emergency room visits. In twen- from twenty, I'm sorry, from twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen, so two years. We had emergency room visits and based on some of the people that I saw riding, you know, it's surprising that that number based, that, that percentage, that's such a small percentage, um, is low, but, uh, people pick these up, they ride them, uh, may have no experience riding them, so that number is pretty amazing that it's that low. Um, the e-scooters, again, that they seem to be the, the things that are the, the highest number of injuries. Um, but the, the numbers still are really low, so the, the popularity has increased. So have the number of injuries and you can see the numbers there at the bottom of the screen. So they keep going up and up and up, but the number of eighty-four million rides, uh, only twenty-seven thousand in, in twenty nineteen. Uh, that's a pretty low percentage. I'm going to pass it back over to, uh, Maggie and she's going to talk about what our options are here for, uh, us going forward.
Thank you.
Andy, before you leave, I got a couple of questions.
Yeah, there. Yeah, go ahead.
Do we have, you, you guys kept talking about information and things you'd researched and everything. What is the breakdown of places like Washington, Chicago, tourist-type cities versus older communities, um, like ours? Uh, large cities versus small cities? I mean, there are cities within the state of Ohio who have gone this route and because there hasn't been ridership, have abandoned these things.
Right, right.
Well, I, I mean, we're an older, I, I mean, older from not only population, but older, uh, from, from how malls, et cetera, things like that. I, I'm, I just struggle with how many people w- will use this. You talked about from a ballgame or whatever and going to a brewery. I, I mean, I guess they can go from the phrase pavilion to Chick-fil-A or something, but, you know. Um, I'm just knowing that there are communities that opened this up and found out that this was great for Los Angeles and downtown Washington for tourists and people in Chicago for the weekend, what Kettering, Ohio?
Right, yeah. And, and, and of course, we've had this conversation a lot. I mean, pretty much everybody I talked to about this, we have this same conversation. Is any company going to want to come into Kettering and run one of these systems? Based on demand right now, I don't see that. Uh, I think if I were to, to try to predict the future, what, what it would be, I think I would look at maybe the Link system that's in downtown Dayton, expanding into Kettering. Um, I've actually talked to them several times about looking at that option and how we do that, how we extend that system. Um, you know, would have to go probably into Oakwood first and then into Kettering, um, to get down here, but that could be a, a system. Just they, I think they just expanded to the west, um, this past year. And with their new dockless system, it's a lot easier for them and a lot cheaper for them to, to expand. You know, they just put a couple bike racks in and they can expand with by just buying, by buying some more bikes. Um, so I think that's, for us, that's what our option is going to be, where we, uh, participate even in, in part of a system where, where it may be a public-private partnership or we partner with Link and, and they expand into Kettering and then we run it for a while and see what happens. And, and if it doesn't work, we just stop it. Um, but you're right, I don't, I don't see like, uh, you know, bigger tourist cities. I don't see us having companies coming here and wanting to put in, uh, these micro mobility devices around town. Um, right now, um, that could change. I mean, I mean, the gas prices go up again, who knows what else could cause this to change, but, um, it, it, the system is there and it gets better. Like Maggie mentioned, the bikes get better and lighter and smaller every day. Um, so it'd be great to have, um, it'd be great, great to have this option. And I think that's what is, these regulations that we're going to talk about here in a second would allow us to do.
Um, I, I don't want to interrupt you, Andy, either, but in talking with Laura Astandia from, you know, the Link system in Dayton too, she, she did mention to us, she said, you know, when I talk to these companies, they're not, their niche is not the suburbs. Um, it's just not where their ridership is currently. However, it's not to say, the numbers of ra- the number of rides and the, the, uh, the trend for them is so, the, the trajectory of it is so fast and so high that it's not to say that at some point there would be, they would find a niche here somehow. So, um, in looking at, in doing this now, um, you know, it's better to have something in place, which we'll talk about it. Uh, you know, and not be caught behind the eight ball when, when that time comes. Uh, but yeah, I, I doubt that these companies are going to be, you know, we're just all of a sudden going to see an influx of five companies coming knocking on our door.
Thank you. Yeah.
Andy, I have a, a quick question. You, you, of the, of the type of, uh, options available, uh, or vehicles, uh, you did mention the electric skateboard and you said you haven't seen many. I have seen them, uh, in California and, and other places. And they're frankly, to me, they're a little frightened.
Yeah.
Have you seen the one, the one-wheeled skateboard?
Yeah, yeah, I had, I saw that one. And, and, and you know, these, the folks that are on these things are going very, very fast. And they're, I've seen them kind of whip around people and so forth. I, I find that to be a lot more dangerous than I do an electric bike that, you know, they're privately owned. Some people have them, they ride them around town. I'm, and I think, uh, do you have any data on the electric skateboard? So that we can either figure out what to do with that? How, how do we manage that one?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know, I mean, if, if we sign, single out a, a single type of device, um, I think, I think we need to look at these all together as one. And, and if, if something like that becomes a problem, I think we would address it at that point. That doesn't seem to be the direction that these companies are going, that because I think it's, because it, they're not as easy to ride. I think it's really easy to ride a scooter and not ride a bike.
Yeah, I think the crossover I'm talking about is the private ownership, you know, of, of the skateboard, which would fit into it, not, you're, that's not what you're talking about. And I understand that. I want to keep that in mind, because.
Yeah, and, and you know, that, and that could be a, a, a traffic issue, uh, you know, a, a law issue versus, well, not that this isn't a law, but, um, where we, we discuss more about, um, how we deal with, because you're right, these elect, the electric, electrification of all these kind of devices is going to change how people use them.
Okay, thanks.
Private, privately on too. Yeah. Thanks, Chris.
Somebody else? Okay, so, um, when Andy and I took into consideration all the factors that he just went through, um, we saw three main, um, options. So I'll go through each of those with you and the benefits and risks of each. Uh, so first option could be allow shared mobility device programs, uh, in the city of Kettering with no regulation. That, that's an option. So the benefit here is the companies get the greatest flexibility, right? They get to come in and decide where they want to place their, their, uh, devices. Um, and, and that benefits the consumer as well. Uh, but, you know, you're going to see all the benefits that Andy talked about, a decrease in fuel emission and gas savings for citizens, closing last mile gaps potentially, and, uh, fun, the fun way to travel in Kettering. Um, but Andy and I saw this as the greatest risk, uh, for the city. So you're going to have the greatest risk here for those aesthetic issues, which you're, you know, potentially have bikes and scooters left wherever, um, and no ability to really do anything about it. Um, potential for greater safety issues, traffic issues, um, and greater potential for complaints. Um, so basically no control here with this option, um, no potential for, you know, charging a permit fee, um, to make up for, you know, the administrative burden of having to deal with, uh, the rest of these issues. Um, so risk for liability for the city for injury and that sort of thing kind of leaves us wide open. No ability to require these companies to be insured or to indemnify the city for injury or property damage. Um, next slide, please. Uh, the, the second option as we see it, uh, main option is to ban them, uh, ban these programs from coming into the city. Um, you're going to, the benefit here is you're going to avoid all that. You're going to avoid the risks from the first option altogether, um, and cities have done this. There are cities who've done this, Oakwood did it. Uh, but the risk here is missed opportunities, right? You're going to miss all the benefits we already talked about. Next slide, please. And the third option, uh, that as we see it would be to allow the shared mobility device programs in the city, but regulate them. So you would, you know, as we understand it, you would be getting your benefits, um, and, uh, limiting your risks. Okay, you're not eliminating the risk, but you're limiting your risks. Um, so you're going to get all the benefits we already talked about, but you're going to maintain city control, right? You're going to be able to require these companies to indemnify the city against property damage or injury. Um, you're going to get to have limitations on liability in there and you're going to require them to have, uh, insurance. Um, you're going to have control over, you know, uh, traffic regulation for these, for these, uh, devices. You're going to be able to implement some safety measures and, uh, control aesthetic issues. As well, you're going to potentially be able to, through a permit system, um, charge fees for administrative burden in, uh, implementing these things. And you can control the fleet size, the number of, of these, um, devices in the city as well, which will, um, help with all these other items that I just mentioned, um, and also, uh, control parking. Uh, the risk here, there's still risk. Um, like I said, you are limiting, you're not eliminating. So there is less flexibility here for these companies. Laura Astandia once again told us, you know, there have been, um, these companies, if they're over-regulated to the point where they can't, you know, gain anything financially, they just won't come. Um, but she said, for the most part, they've been, been very agreeable and, and understand reasonable regulations and that sort of thing. So, um, you know, you're still going to have some potential for, uh, aesthetic issues, leaving, people leaving things where they shouldn't. But you're going to be able to have, you know, an ordinance in place to address those issues, deal with them. Um, and I'll get into that in a little bit. Um, so yeah, you'll still have some of those traffic issues and potential complaints from, from folks as well, but that you won't be without a way to, to deal with them. Um, next slide, please. So we thought you might ask what other municipalities are doing and I think some of you are kind of already on this beat and know, know this already. Um, so Dayton, Columbus, Cleveland, Cincinnati and Athens all allow these programs, uh, with regulation. Uh, you might see a trend there, you're seeing the big cities like we talked about and one college town. So they really do kind of target, uh, those areas and they work out well in those areas. Uh, banned, Oakwood chose to ban them. Um, I put Dublin in here, uh, they're not banned entirely in Dublin, but, uh, e-scooters in particular, they took a citizen survey when they wanted to figure out whether or not they were going to invite some of these comp, e-scooter companies in. Um, and they previously had an ordinance before this that said they couldn't be used on roadways or shared use paths. Um, but the citizen survey came back pretty split, but just a little bit on the edge of people not wanting them. Um, so they chose not to, they just chose to keep that ordinance in place. They did end their bike share program, uh, they had Lime with Worthington. They did end their bike share program, they had Lime with Worthington, City of Worthington as well. And actually Lime was the one to pull out of that, it was about a six month pilot program. And the ridership just wasn't there. So didn't have anything to do with with those other issues we talked about, it just was a a lack of ridership. No regulations, as far as I can tell, in Centerville, Beaver Creek, Springboro, Westchester, Westerville, Strongsville and Yellow Springs, I just I I don't know if they're not looking at it at all, or they're just taking their time, or you know, we've had, we've been busy, we've all been pretty busy with COVID and some other things, so it just might not be on their radar right now. Next slide, please.
Maggie, we had. Go back to the other slide, would you? No regulations. Didn't Centerville and some of those cities have moratorium type?
Yes, and I I'm sorry, by by no regulation, I just meant they haven't put an ordinance in place addressing, it's a moratorium, I was kind of not addressing that, but yeah, some of these cities have done what we did, doing a moratorium to look at it. Sorry about that. So after looking all at all of this, Andy and I came up with our recommendation, and that would be to allow shared mobility device programs with regulations in the city of Kettering, so that we're reaping all those benefits we talked about of these devices for Kettering residents and visitors, but we're minimizing those risks. We would recommend limiting the shared mobility device programs to either the that station based or locked to hub models, although we do feel like the station based model is really kind of going out the door technology wise. So it would mostly be that locked to hub kind of bike rack model where there's a definite place to park those bikes. And then banning the dockless models to lessen the greater safety and aesthetic issues associated with those models. You know, where you're just leaving, leaving a device anywhere and everywhere. Next slide, please. So I took a look at those cities that have regulations and they all have their own chapter of their codified ordinances addressing these systems. So we would recommend the same thing, and I just took some example headings from, actually, this is from the City of Athens and their ordinance. And just to to give you kind of like an idea of what those regulations could look like. So you would have a definition section, I won't, we've already kind of gone over that, I won't go through that, but they all have a permitting system where these companies would come in and have to apply for a permit. And so this section would go over that whole process, they would need to provide insurance. They would need to agree to indemnify the city against any injuries or property damage, that sort of thing. And then there'd be the limitations on liability, there would be the permit approval requirements, which we could, they could be extensive, they could be as extensive as you want. And then the section about how they could be denied, how they could be suspended or revoked, how those permits could be. And just a little note on that. When you have those aesthetic issues, when you have these companies where you notice that, hey, our KPD officers are out there just you know, picking up scooters out of the middle of the street and they did it, you know, this many times in this span. We would, we would keep track of that. And at the end of their permit period, we would look at that and say, you know, this could all be within the, within your code. Hey, you guys have not been keeping up with what you're supposed to be doing, maintenance wise, you're supposed to come back every night, clean up, make sure that they're back in their parking spots. And you're not doing that, so we're not going to renew, right, or we're going to suspend, so you've got that that consequence in place there within the code, you would have a fee structure, so you would do fees for the permits, and then you could charge those annually or upon renewal, that sort of thing. And then you could have an appeals process for if you got an appeal for a denial of a permit. Another section would be fleet size, you could limit the fleet size for any of these companies, so Athens has a fleet size limitation. Total within the city of Athens, you can have five hundred of these, five hundred devices within the city of Athens. And then each individual company can only have up to a hundred, say. They can have a combination of scooters and bikes, but they can only have a hundred total. And that leads me, I'm going fast here, to the next bullet, which is the distribution to underserved areas of the city, and this really closes last mile gaps for people who are underserved from a transportation standpoint, so say in Athens, they have, you know, each company can have a hundred devices, okay, company ten percent in your in your code, ten percent of those devices have to be located in an underserved area as determined by the city in its sole discretion, so you can work with that company to pinpoint areas of the city where you think you're going to close last mile gaps for folks who have transportation issues. Geo fencing, like we talked about a little bit earlier, you can geo fence for a lot of different things, it's it's very nifty. You can tell these companies within the code. Hey, we have a parade coming up, we don't want a bunch of scooters and stuff going through this parade, so please geo fence the parade route just for this day. Or we're having a bacon fest and we want these people to be able to come on their scooters or bikes to bacon fest, but we don't have a hub. You can geo fence a little parking section for for these bikes and scooters for your event. You have a bridge reconstruction, you have some sort of construction going on, you don't want people to be in danger in that area, you can give notice to these companies through your through your code and say, hey, please geo fence this area. So that's nice. The rest of the sections in these particular codes cover requirements for these companies to give warnings and disclaimers to their customers regarding safety, device maintenance and requirements of use. Again, you can require them to make sure that each device is in its place at the end of each business day or whenever. And that they're always in good working order, you can not renew, you can suspend, you can revoke a permit if that is not done. There could be additional traffic regulations in addition to what the city already has, if you would rather people under the age of sixteen not ride them, if you don't want more than one person riding them at a time, that sort of thing. You can regulate that. And parking as well, of course, you can determine where these hubs are and where else people can park along their their route. And then the last one here is a data reporting requirement, which Athens in particular uses to see where these people are going. So the companies are required to give them data monthly to show how many people are using them, where are they going, to determine, hey, maybe we need more in this area, it's not working in this area, let's take them out. Let's determine where we could use more, less, or maybe not at all, you know, so. So that has been helpful for them, they did give me some of that those examples. And to your question about COVID and how it's been affecting these programs, it's affected them a lot. So at least in Athens, they went from maybe a couple hundred rides a day their first few months, or they haven't had it that long, to maybe three rides a day during COVID. So for a college town where kids are leaving and they're not supposed to, you know, be out, that affects them immensely. That is all I have for you, slide wise, does anyone have any questions? Yeah. Tony.
First of all, Maggie, you and Andy did a great job, now you're going to test to see what I learned.
That's a lot of information.
Shared mobility devices versus mobility devices. In my mind, the only difference is the mo, just a plain old mobility device, a bicycle, for example, is owned by an individual. This shared is owned by some company and they might have a group of. So we've already got, we already have mobility devices running around in town. Using our bike path and our pass. Are there any particular regulations now on shared devices? I mean, we have, I I would assume we do, we have the law, right? Traffic laws. Did I lose you?
Yes, no, I'm here, so in terms of these shared mobility devices, the moratorium that we have in place refers to those. I do think, I do think our definition of vehicle covers, and Ted, tell me if I'm wrong, but it covers electronic bicycles. So they are currently under our current traffic codes and and all of that. But you're right, there's individuals are allowed to own these on their own, you know, and they have to obey the the traffic laws.
Okay, then the next thing, do you or Andy know, has there been any of the vendors that have been acting like they're interested in coming here?
No.
I I like
I wish.
I I like the idea of of maybe something piggybacking on to what they have going on in downtown Dayton. I like the the sounds of that, but I also think that as the mayor said, our population is older. But I believe we need a vision that our population might start getting younger someday. And if this is the kind of program we need to have that might help turn some of that around, then I I think we ought to entertain the the idea or the recommendation that you guys have given.
So I'll tell you that there were a lot of questions about shared mobility systems in the application for our bike friendly city. So they they are definitely looking at that. It's if we're allowing it, we're regulating it, we have any to make us more bicycle friendly, so it's it's definitely something that that the the League of American Bicyclists is looking at and and they want to see more of around the the country.
Thanks, Andy, that that was, that was my question, to to what extent does the application that we have in process to become one of those cities, is this part of that, and you just answered that question. The only comment I want to make is, and and to piggyback on what Tony said about you know, how are things changing in the community, progressive city, et cetera? I I just harken back to twenty years, twenty five years ago, when the whole notion of bike pads, bike lanes, people riding in the winter ti, I mean, you name it, we had so much opposition to to at that time, and and look where we are today with the amazing bike pads we have, the bike lanes, you know, the signage, all the trails. I just, I I think, you know, as we move to the future, I have to agree with Tony, if we want to be a progressive city we we need to, you know, and look at this stuff, and and it's got to be heavily regulated. All the work I've done with the National League of Cities, it's got to be heavily regulated from us to them. Don't let them tell us what to be doing, and they cannot come in until they get, everything's, you know, all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, but I I have to agree, I don't think, I don't think they're going to line up at the door, I don't think there's going to be much interest right now. But I bet you five years from now, ten years from now, we're going to be moving in that direction, and to have that on the books, I don't think it can hurt.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we look at, you know, these aren't just two wheeled vehicles or one wheeled vehicles, this is a three wheeled vehicle, this is a four wheeled vehicle. You know, we we all have, you know, we've all seen the the medical device scooters that, why can't that be what is the shared mobility device? Something that's even easier to ride that you, and I've seen these where they have the scooter where you actually have a seat. And you could sit down on the scooter as you're riding instead of having to stand on it, so we have different differently abled people using these devices and, you know, they they may need to have more wheels to help with that.
I my question is, though, it's it's interesting, though, you know, whether it's the last mile or it's the last block, would be my words, and and Janelle is doing so much. I'll say pounding the pavement on transportation in our city and the tre, and the challenges that some of our folks are having with transportation and the ability to get around in our city, our current residents that maybe don't own a car, would be my words. So I guess I'm, my my question is a bit broader in that, you know, legislation aside, yeah, amen, amen, you know. Get you, get your ducks all lined up when it happens. But is anybody even having the discussion of, it might be just the service we need instead of a and I know at one point there was discussion of a my words, a Kettering shuttle to drive in a certain circle around Kettering. And this is a different transportation solution to somebody that needs to get to the grocery store that doesn't have one. So who, Mark, I guess maybe the question to you is, of all the thousands of little committees we have, is there a little committee that is saying, oh, that's that's a good question? Or is that just my words, Janelle in the corner banging her head on the wall saying trying to solve this transportation problem, and maybe we've got the answer right in front of us, I I'm just asking.
Yeah, and and we may have the answer right in front of us, I know this issue comes up at our statewide association. And the comment that Maggie mentioned about requiring that they install these facilities in areas that we determine they must have them. And I'll use a very negative term, but when these first started coming out, it was almost like redlining. They were only dropping the equipment in the areas where they had the best market. And that left the underserved underserved again, and so that's where we can help out with the regulation standpoint. And ensure that the areas that need it for the issues you're talking about are there. Which means folks like Maggie and Andy and the Bike Committee would meet with folks like Janelle and our Parks Department and other folks to make sure that we're identifying those underserved areas.
Like you said, Jackie, there's there is definitely something here for students. It's a younger community that that really likes these as well, I mean, that just statistically, so there there is something here for students.
As as much as maybe nobody wants to hear this either, I'm right in front of our little arts people, you know, just saying. They're going to have their little perma complex with their school, they might need a little bike action.
Okay, is there any other questions, we've got some things we've got to to get to, get to executive session and that, so if you guys kind of keep us up to date and if we're going to extend moratorium, how we're going to do it and all, and I don't remember who said it, but that was a good presentation, I think all of us came away with a better understanding of what we had as far as this shared bike type of stuff, so, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. Good night.
Thanks, Mayor, we will, we will come back basically in memo form to you to let you know that our recommendation will be to extend the moratorium. Give us some time to draft regulations, come back to you in the summer with regulations so that when COVID ends and when the nice weather comes about again next year in twenty twenty two, we would be ready at that point, so I think that's where we're wound up heading with this, we'll put Steve in charge of getting the memo to make sure we got all that right, get it in front of you so that you know when the extension of the moratorium is coming towards your agenda.
Mark, Mark, the moratorium ends when? Right now. Isn't it like June or something?
February.
February, and and i- is your thought to extend it for another year, if we're talking about maybe something active by twenty twenty two, I would only encourage, I would only be in favor of extending it till the end of the year of twenty one, no longer. I mean, if if we're going to put something in place, we should be ready as soon as we can, not drag our feet on it.
Our intention will be a summertime presentation of of a possible ordinance, which then gets enacted by you.
This summer.
Be ready to go this summer, yeah.
Thank you.
Not eighteen months.
Like June, July.
But a moratorium, we can have in place and cancel at any time as we work through this process, so I'm not so concerned about when the moratorium would end. Because if we have it in place and decide that the circumstances have changed, we can end that moratorium and then we can put this this new policy in place, so. Mark, anything else?
Yeah, we have two more items that I need to get to before we go into executive session and Ted will shake his head affirmatively when I say, I think executive session could probably be just five minutes, so we should be okay. He's not shaking his head affirmatively. He's holding back on that. But I will talk very quickly. But I will talk very quickly. From a COVID-19 update, we did implement additional programming in Parks and Rec on Monday or yesterday. So that is in place, as we mentioned to you last week. And then my recommendation to you and to staff tomorrow morning will be from our work from home model. That model is set to go through next Monday and everybody return to the office on Tuesday. The current model is each director picks what's working best for their department from a work from home standpoint, and they implement it. My recommendation to you and my recommendation to staff is that we run that program through the end of the payroll, February 28th, end of the pay period, February 28th. So extended another 30, 40 days, revisited at that time. But frankly, I think it's working and it's keeping our employees as safe as we can in this environment while still delivering the service level. So my recommendation at this point, we'll just keep doing it if I see no objections from all of you. Okay, I'm not seeing any objections. And with that, Councilman Kleep has you'd asked that we add an item to the agenda tonight. We have, as I said, probably a good 10 minutes. If you'd like to use those 10 minutes, if not, we can do it on the 26th, whatever your preferences. Because obviously it's your meeting.
Well, I, so everybody knows, I sent a note to the mayor and to Mark in the last week or two requesting that we have a discussion this evening on forming a charter review committee. It's well within our charter that charter review committees can be established at least once every 10 years. And I think we're going to be having a new administration of like a few new council people coming in the first of the year. And I believe it's an opportunity for us to take a look or get a committee to take a look at changes to the charter that might be in order. Some as simple as the last time around when some of the charter was changed. There was things as simple as getting the references to he should do this and he should do that in the charter, getting those things changed. But because they were all bundled into one big charter amendment, those things never got changed. But a big part of, of course, what we, what we need to have looked at would be things like the term limits at one time. And Rob, you can jump in here and say anything you want about that. But we were talking about back, back in May of 2019, looking at the possibility of a, an amendment to the charter to take a look at term limits again. And we as a council, all seven of us have had discussions about that previously. And I just think it's a, it's a, why not go ahead and form a charter review committee and give a, give a look at changes? So that's, that's why I asked for it to be put on. I haven't heard anything back from the mayor on it, so I don't know what, what his thoughts are. And of course, Mark just said that he's following up on, you know, putting it on the agenda.
But if you're looking for back, I think this would be an appropriate time because of the amount of turnover on this council that's coming up. I would think somebody like veterans like us would be in a better position to look and analyze what recommendations might come in for what it's worth. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, Tony, I, since you, I was called out. I, I would fully support that, you know, though I, I am an advocate of term limits. I'm not an advocate of how they were structured. So I would be in support of doing that. I know I did discuss about a ballot initiative. I was planning on kind of helping organize it this past year during COVID. And obviously that was just not an option because we would have had to go on door to door and, and whatnot. But I think a charter review, it would save a lot of time, save a lot of money. And it would be an easier way to certainly fix the leadership gap that we're going to be looking on. You know, thankfully, we do have somebody that is, you know, next year, hopefully going to be stepping up and, you know, amongst us. You know, that, that will kind of fix a big portion of that. But I think long-term, it does need to be remedied.
Anything?
Not to, not, not to disagree with what you just said, Rob, but that was way before COVID when you were going to form that group. It was actually.
Well, I do remember somebody bringing up wanting to increase pay, Tony. And I said we couldn't do it. So no, don't twist what I was doing.
And while you sat there and told us you were gonna, you had the people to do.
And I also said if you brought that forward, I wasn't going to do it because it didn't make sense politically. And no offense on this people here, I think I know what I'm talking about.
Well.
Look, we're, we're, we're not, I'm not, we're not going to get into it to, 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 to a back and forth. Everybody, you know, there, there are both sides and I understand both sides. The things that concern me are more so the inaccuracy, inaccuracies of this charter review and lack of thought process in putting together an emotional type review. And I'll give you an example. If we have someone that moves out of town and leaves their position on council and say they leave February 1st. The charter, the way it was changed was that nobody, the way it used to be, we as council could appoint people and then those people had to run, et cetera. The way the charter reads now, Ted, you can correct me if I'm wrong. If that same example of that employee takes a job in another, another state and leaves, resigns from his council seats, seat, we have no ability to fill that seat until the November election. Because our charter talks about 120 days to the next election cycle. And while there is a spring election, that doesn't fall within the 120 days. So say Joe Blow leaves, you know, district, district number four. That district will have no representation from, as a council person until the December election of which it will not be elected. Or I guess they are, I'm a little confused as whether they take office in November or they wait till the new term comes about. But from February 1st to November, there's no representation for that district. Is that true, Ted?
You're correct, Mayor. And in the example that you gave, assuming someone vacated their seat February 1st, the next election, general election in the city would be the primary. You couldn't do that because you have to wait 120 days. And, and so the next election would be the general election in November. And then the person would not be, whoever won the election would not be seated until the results are certified, which is probably not going to be until mid-November earliest.
Those are things that I think, to your point, Tony, that we need to look about or look at in correcting them for, for things like that. And there's probably other examples. But I don't have a problem in appointing a charter review committee. It's not within the intent from my point of view because I am leaving 12/31 of 21. So that has nothing to do with the major push for this charter review committee, which was term limits and, and pay. So other thoughts, other ideas, how we move forward with it?
So sir, you'll be, you would be the one that would select the committee, if I recall from being on the last one. Just a food for thought. Probably need to pick some enemies and stick them on there. Meaning we need, we need to stick a couple people that are the naysayers and ask them to support the city with some people that have logic in, to have those conversations. Because I think that there was a lot of criticism that the naysayers weren't represented. And so I'm just, I'm giving my 10 cents that I think that would be money well spent. Stick one goofball on there that's going to bring up funky ideas. I mean, just, so we're not criticized for stacking the deck. My words.
Well, I, I think it's important that the mayor reaches out to all aspects of our community to form the committee. Bill, you made a comment and something to the effect of I, ideas that we, that we want to put forth. Were you thinking that, I know myself and I think all of us on council have specific things in the charter as it stands now that I would like a committee to look at? Is that what you meant? That, that members of, we can, we can give ideas to the committee. We can't tell them what to do or how to operate, but we can certainly give them our thoughts.
Well, I guess twofold, if you're asking me the question. One, yes, I thought some of us might have specific ideas and we don't want to lose that opportunity because we're all going to be leaving. But more importantly, I would think, if I remember how the process works, the committee makes recommendations and doesn't it come back to us then as a filter as to what we accept? Taking advantage of our collective wisdom while we're still together here.
Got you. Yeah, you're correct. Absolutely. Good. I agree. Okay, thanks. I, I just would want to stay here referring to the, these residents as goofballs and I, I don't agree with that. Okay.
Sorry.
I mean, I don't refer to Lisa Crosley, you know, a business owner, all that as a goofball. I mean, these are people that, that care about their city, they care about their country, you know? And that was part of the problem. The last time we did this is we didn't have essentially what I would call a bipartisan committee. It was a one-sided thing and that's why it got defeated. So I mean, you, you guys can point fingers all you want and whatever. But thing is, if you make it fair, you'll still get what you want, but you got to have input from the other side. I mean, I agree with you, Jackie, completely. It's got to be a fair committee.
Anybody else? Ted, who does appoint that? Does council appoint that? Does the mayor appoint that? Who appoints the committee? Whatever that means.
The charter says the mayor appoints the committee.
Air.
And all members have to be electors of the city.
And I'll just add that we, we last did this in 2016. I don't know. We stated the year, but the year you're all referring to is 2016.
Mark, are you sure?
Because I was on the committee and it was well before I.
2012, Mark. It was 2012. Was it?
There were, there were amendments to the charter in 2012, but that wasn't because of a charter review committee. That was.
Okay, that was a citizen petition. But, okay, we had a charter review committee in 2016?
We did. Don Walls, I believe, was the chairman of the charter review committee. And I believe that was the year the charter review committee put forth the recommendation, council accepted it, it went on the ballot. And then there were also a citizen-led charter amendments on the ballot at that time as well.
Okay.
Yeah, because Bill and I are coming to the end of our eight-year limitations based on the charter's changes. So. And we were, and to be honest with you, I thought, I thought we were on council for a couple years before the charter was changed. Because I thought it was changed and then I had a year or two before the eight years kicked in.
You did.
As far as that. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I, why am I hung up on 2012? I thought it was passed in 2012. Don, yours kicked in in 13, eight years would be 21. You got to serve two terms afterward. I go to 23.
Right. But, 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 but it didn't happen in the November election that I ran in. Because if it would have happened, it couldn't have happened in November with a charter change and my eight years go through now.
You're all saying the same thing. Let me restate it for you. There was a charter change in 2012, but it was not from the charter review committee. And that charter change put in term limits.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Then there was a charter review committee in 2016 that looked to amend those term limits. And then there was a citizen issue that year as well that made some changes. Those were passed and those are the changes that are in the charter now.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I mean, I'm not sure where we are with this. We had some discussion. Is there general agreement that that's the direction the council is predisposed of, of setting up a new charter review committee? Based on the comments that we've had and the diversity that we've talked about?
Yep.
I don't even have Jackie on my picture, so I don't know where you are.
I, I mean, I definitely agree. I think it's necessary. I mean, even at the most basic level, as the only woman on the council, there is no mention that I'm even allowed to be here because it's all men. So I would say, yeah, I think that's a smart thing to do.
We will end that prayer with a woman. How about that? Okay, can, I'll get with each one of y'all send out or just begin to send me some names of people that you feel would be good on this and, and, and would be interested in this. And we'll kind of go through a process of how many do we want, what kind of makeup do we want? And go from, go from there. Anything else? We got to get out. Ted's still got his thing to do and we've got five minutes here. So. Okay, is there?
Your honor, we can, we'll just hold off on the executive session. We don't have time for that. You've only got about six, seven minutes before you're on air with your regular council meetings. So why don't you take your two-minute break and then we'll be back for the council meeting.
Okay, great. Can somebody let me know whether there's, there are people for these public hearings? So I know, because I'll have to swear them in.
Yes, Your Honor, there's a couple people already in the waiting room. So I'll manage that with you during the meeting to let them in, you know, I'll queue you on that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Where's Joe today?
Joe is feeling not so good and Judy is in the hospital. So.
Thank you.